We're rolling.
Okay.
Well, you know Martha popped out.
Here, I I just want to unmute. I'm here.
You were in the waiting room for some reason.
Am I am I in now?
Yes, you are.
I hear you Martha.
I just I just go on. Yeah, I just go on mute because God knows what kind of noises are going to come out of my house. Or my neighbor. My dog.
Play the dog. Play the dog.
You're you're being recorded.
Good evening, everyone. Molly, yes?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the town council. Town council session for Wednesday, September ninth, twenty twenty. We're from town council.
Whatever the phone number. Got it fixed.
There you go. The Shoreham Town Council's meeting via telecommunications pursuant to State or Island Executive Order twenty forty-six dated June twelfth, twenty twenty. Um, the access for the meeting is available on clerk base. And with all the codes in the meeting, pass codes and everything. Um, obviously, if you're joining us, you know what they are. But um, they are available, have been available also on the board. We don't not have the bandwidth, supportive video link for all members of the public, so please, if you're from the public, please dial in. Um, or watch on YouTube. Um, at um, HTTPS backslash backslash WWW YouTube dot com backslash channel backslash U C M B O. S I Q zero B S F R G one K X P G N B C A. And that is also available, I believe, on the uh, on the town website. So the first item on the agenda for this evening um, is to receive an act and a resolution approving the insurance issuance of some issuance of bonds or notes in an amount not to exceed eight eight million dollars for the financing, engineering, construction, equipment, deployment, and initial operation of a municipal broadband network for Black Island. This is the culmination, I think, of 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 months and and years of hard work on the part of many people in town. Some which are with us tonight, including Michelle Spear and Amy Land. Um, to get this through, get this done, get this to a point where we're ready to start doing something with it. Um, we've said it before, and I'll say it again, we commend everyone who's worked on it, worked so hard on it to get it done. We really appreciate the effort. I know everyone will as soon as we get things fired. So we look forward to it, and this is uh, this is one step towards that goal. Have a resolution before us um, in order to um, allow this to. Do you have anything you want to fill us in on along the lines, or is it pretty cut and dry?
What the heck? That was not me. Where my dog?
Hold on a second. I'm trying to unmute you, Amy, but I can't do it.
There you go. I was just waiting for um, that background to stop. Um, it's fairly straightforward. The only thing I would add is that um, we are, of course, anxious to take advantage of the low rates in the marketplace right now. So we're working on structuring this in a way that um, takes advantage of those rates, but still defers a little bit of our repayment to match with um, an income stream in uh, later in twenty-one and into fiscal year twenty-two. So we're working out the details of that structure right now. Um, but we're excited to to bring this to market, and we've had some interest from some of the banks that we typically work with.
Great. Um, is there any kind of um, time constraint on getting this signed by our entire council?
There is not on the um, actual execution of the signatures. Um, if you weren't sure that you're ready to vote tonight, um, there is some expediency in that, so.
Okay. Very good. Um, does anyone in council have any questions? I spend recent. Go ahead.
Amy, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah. Amy, uh, how does one plan for the the uh, successful um, grant award that we are all hoping for, uh, which I think is in about a month? So does one start moving now at eight and then with the ability to slip to six or whatever the grant may be, or how does that work?
Sure, um, I I would almost say that the grant structure makes this easier than it might otherwise be in that the grant itself actually pays out over ten-year period. Um, so we need to make that full commitment upfront. Again, that's why we were talking about sort of a relatively larger number at eight million. Because even if we are successful, we need to fund that today, and we'll recover funds over the next ten years.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions or comments from the council? Martha, do you have anything?
I have no, I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Chris?
I'm good, thank you.
Um, that that being said, I'll make a motion to uh, I'll make a motion to um, sign a resolution of the town and Shoreham approving the issuance of bonds and or notes in an amount not to exceed eight million dollars for the financing, engineering, construction, equipment, deployment, and initial operation of a municipal broadband network for Black Island.
Second.
By Chris, any further comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, Chris?
Aye.
I'm Sven.
Aye.
Martha?
Aye.
I vote in the affirmative. I I'm sorry, I didn't mention Andre Boudreaux is not with us this evening. So we have a unanimous vote of four to nothing. And congratulations, and we'll uh, let's get this started. Thank you, Amy, for the background on this. And the good work. Next item on the agenda is to receive an act request of the finance director to open bank accounts uh, for both uh, the Black Island Water Company construction account and the New Shoreham Broadband Fund. I'll make a motion to um, I'll make a motion to uh, authorize the finance director to open bank accounts for the Black Island Water Company construction account and also the New Shoreham Broadband Fund.
Second.
Second by Chris, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, Chris?
Aye.
Martha?
Aye.
Uh, Sven?
Aye.
I also vote in the affirmative, the motion carries four to nothing. There you go, Amy, you have the authorization. Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Um, and those are, by the way, those are two um, really important projects, one of them obviously in a long-term situation, but the Black Island Water Company construction, uh, the upgrade that they're doing is just, I think, almost equally as important, and it's for another long-term um, repair that's going to serve us well in the many years to come. So two very important projects getting underway. It's kind of an exciting time for both of them. I know they've been working hard, both both entities have been working hard, um, the water company and under John Brunick's on leadership and also the broadband committees, so I'm looking forward to this getting underway. The next item on the agenda is to uh, is is title of boards, commissions, and committees. Um, and I'll be announcing vacancies. Um, we have a vacancy now on the zoning board after receiving a letter of resignation from Elizabeth Connor. And we have that letter. I will make a motion to um, accept the um, resignation of Elizabeth Connor from the zoning board with with a with a recommendation for a letter of thanks be sent to her for all her many years of hard work and good service to the town.
I'll second that. Ken, how many years was that she was she on the zoning board? Twenty-five?
I think it's at least that. I can't answer that question.
I just wanted, I just want, I think that's noteworthy. I I don't know anybody that's been on a board or committee longer, to be honest with you. Maybe Gail Hines on the recreation board, but zoning, I think, is like much, much, much more involved.
Yeah. So she refers to it as many years, but um, that's a lot of time and a lot of commitment. And um, as you said, it's it's a great service to the community, so we certainly appreciate it.
Much appreciated.
Like the like that and thank her for her time. So um, so we have a motion in accept a letter of resignation from Elizabeth Con- Connor. All those in favor, Chris?
Aye.
Ben?
Regrettably, aye.
Martha?
Aye.
I also vote in the affirmative, four to nothing. The next um, we have an announcement of a vacancy in the senior advisory committee. We have a letter dated the first of September from Sandra Hoff resigning from the committee. And uh, I'd like to make a motion to uh, accept her letter of resignation again with a with a letter of thanks going out to her for her service um, on the senior advisory. Senior advisory or senior citizens commission. Motion, that's my motion.
Second.
Second by Chris. Uh, all those in favor, Chris?
Aye.
Then?
Aye.
Martha?
Aye.
I vote in the affirmative also, motion carries four to nothing. Um, we have a tomorrow announcements of vacancies. We have a board of assessment, we still have an opening on the board of assessment review. And we have a vacancy on the recreation board as an alternate. Molly, point of order. I know we received another uh, letter of resignation. Can we announce that tonight also, even though it's not on the agenda?
Yes, please announce it. You can accept it at the next meeting.
Okay. I will announce that we uh, will be, we received a letter of resignation from Ben McAlune off the Motor Vehicle Fire Commission, and as Molly indicated, we'll take action at the next meeting to uh, to accept that. But just just give a heads up that we will be looking for um, someone to fill that um, that position to that opening position. So those are the positions that are open, as we mentioned. Um, if anyone thinks they're interested that's listening, um, definitely contact a council member or the town clerk's office um, and let us know. Sven, recent?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I know uh, from the last time we had a opening on zoning that Rob Kloster is very interested. I look forward to discussing that in October, and hopefully a lot of people apply, but um, I'm excited about his application.
Thank you, Sven. Next item on the agenda is um, town council town manager work session discussion. I'll make a note that um, we do not have minutes to act on as item number five tonight. We will have the others for the next meeting next week. Um, we will not have those, so this is basically the last item on the agenda this evening. Um, it's a town manager work session discussion. Um, Mary Ann Crawford, welcome again um, to the uh, to the town hall. I know you're in in with us tonight and in your office. Thank you very much for being here and good to have you. And um, why don't we just um, wade right into it? I'd offer I'd offer you the floor and and you can get started if you'd like.
Great, thank you so much. So um, in the past week and a half, uh, past two and a half weeks, I have met with numerous people um, on the island staff, stakeholders, and I still have a number of other meetings scheduled. So as as it relates to major projects, I'm looking right now when I'm presented to you a major construction projects that are happening right now. Um, and we'll probably have a couple of more that will be added to the list. What I hope to do uh, once a month with the council through my town managers' report is to provide a simple update as to where those projects are. Some may simply be ongoing constructions. Some may have some more information, but it's just to keep the council informed of what's going on on the projects. So for instance, the library window replacement project, which is first phase of a two-phase project. Uh, that contract was awarded awarded, and work is anticipated to start um, tomorrow. The contract will be here, if not tomorrow, definitely on Friday. National Grid project is slated to begin on uh, September fifteenth. Um, at that point, uh, National Grid and the associated um, other contractors have easements for the uh, north parking lot and a good portion of the south parking lot and a temporary easement um, on the beach area. Um, I spoke with Dave Sniffen this afternoon. The beach restrooms will be open this weekend. Um, they're now opening today and tomorrow. They will be open this weekend, especially if there's warm weather. But after that, they will be closed in anticipating uh, the easement that will be in place uh, for the construction of this project. Then, once that's done, obviously, the easements are no longer in place. But I just would like to remind the council and also the members of of the public at large, the reason those restrooms will not be available, it's a construction site and the easements will be in place. The mansion beach, yes?
You want to have us ask questions along the way or at the end? What's better for you?
Whichever you prefer. I'll I'll let you make that decision.
Go ahead, Chris.
So I guess in the past there is there is continued um, tourist uh, travel to Black Island in the end of September, October, as you well know. And what we have done is, when that beach house is closed, uh, it's been a longstanding dialogue between the chamber and the tourism council and the now council about having um, uh, porta johns uh, set up. And and I guess my question is, i- if could we, you hear me now?
Yeah.
What happened?
Yeah, I somehow the system muted me. Can should I start again, Mary Ann?
Nope, I got to the point where you talked about portage, you just, you made the statement of porta johns, and that's when we lost you.
So so the question is, uh, when the beach house closes, do we want to have porta johns for those people that are coming to the island and have families here? Usually one or two, and often in the south parking lot historically. Just so that we support people in need. So as you move forward with that, understand what Dave's saying, understand that need, but at the same point, um, we probably have tourists, at least through Columbus Day.
So so let me explore that. That's a good idea. Let me explore that, especially in time of COVID. If we didn't have COVID um, concerns at this point, we may be having a different discussion, so let me explore that possibility. Like uh, I mean, said, there is some area in the south end of the south parking lot um, that will be accessible. And as I understand it, right off that parking lot, there is a pathway um, that does lead to to the beaches that where folks usually access the beach during what I call now the shoulder season. So let me look into that and and talk to um, Sam and and Dave and see what we can do for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that? Go ahead, Mary Ann, thank you.
Okay, um, mansion beach restrooms. We have just talked with this supplier extensively about specifications. The supplier is now putting together a quote. We anticipate getting that quote in the next two to four weeks. And once we get that quote and move forward with that project, there's a good possibility that project will be done before much of the winter sets in, but we'll see what happens there. Fire department, seventy-five thousand dollars was budgeted in the fire in the capital budget for the fire department for their front garage door area. Uh, we have some schematics designed from an architect. Um, Sam is working with the architects, and also we are going to engage a structural engineer to take a look at that. Um, I was at the fire um, house last Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday, can't remember. And the staff there opened the garage for me so that I and Andre could see it, and you could see where the building was shaking. So we really think it's important to get a structural engineer out there uh, before we proceed with anything. But we will be moving forward with that uh, projects, hopefully relatively soon. Uh, Angie's Way Beach Project, we are applying for CRMC permit. We don't anticipate much problems with that, and once we get that permit, we'll begin moving forward with that uh, project. The other one, uh, the other pro- another project is the broadband project and to echo uh, First Wardens comment. Thank you for all the staff and and the um, folks that were on that committee and brought us to where we are now. The contract is being finalized. Finances, as you know, you just gave um, authorization for the borrowing. And um, they're finalizing the engineering that project. That's one project I'm really looking forward um, to see unveil and go through the construction phase in the coming year. Heinz Field Drainage, um, it's a small drainage project. They're just beginning to prepare some of the information that our engineer will be coming out uh, to confirm some elevations as it relates to that, and that project will be moving forward. The landfill, landfill, that project is essentially done. The only thing that uh, we're waiting on now is some more materials so that we can thicken the cap that we already have there. There's some areas where we have to make it somewhat thicker. We're waiting for the dredging and some other materials that we can mix, and then we'll eventually uh, get that project done. The fence is done, everything else on that project is done. And that's what I have for major projects.
That would be the revetment project.
Right.
Has that um, has that snow fencing been um, dealt with going across the top?
I'll double check on that. I'm not sure. One of the things I haven't done yet that I wanted to do is with projects uh, see a lot of these projects with two people, one, this town engineer for those projects, and also with Sam. Sam, uh, the last week, um, as you can imagine, has been really busy with the opening of school and working with the school with HVAC and and things along that area. So he's been really focused on working on the school and that area, so I haven't been bothering him too much in that regard. But I'll double check on the snow fencing.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm not sure if we're if we're if it's if we're supposed to maintain that, or if that was just put up temporarily to keep people off while the grass, while everything took took root. Um, I know that obviously stuff is growing really well in the lower part of the slope.
Yeah, it is.
So um, any other questions or comments from Mary Ann on this on these items that you just mentioned? Anyone?
Is there any other projects that you folks would like me to include in my report that you can think of? I mean, we do have a couple of other small ones um, that are quite ripe yet. I didn't include the school. I'll be happy to include the school if you'd like to me to do that in the future.
Good.
Chris?
I'm fine now. There isn't anything at this time.
Okay, good. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mary Ann. Um, the the next, the other item on the agenda was a discussion of administrative projects. Is that a separate item?
Yeah, I, yes, I I think it's a separate item. That was major projects. I'm looking at that being major construction project, administrative projects. I have somewhat of a hierarchy, not a hierarchy, where I'm focusing on. It may change in the coming weeks, but um, there's two or three, four things that I'm really going to start focusing us on in the in the coming weeks. I may have something to you as early as the next council meeting and in regard of one. And then the other ones I see, um, I need to spend a little more time on. First rule is I'm currently working with um, Mark Tilson, the zoning official. He has decided officially he will retire on November, at the end of November. So in the coming months, we'll look uh, to see how we're going to organize that position. Mark has been grandfathered in that position as it relates to mechanical, electrical, and plumbing permits. That has all changed. We're exploring different options that we may have to either employ, share, employ, contract it out for those roles within uh, for our for our community. Also, Mark said he will be available to assist us and stay on as the zoning official um, during the upcoming year. What I said to Mark, I I like that, and we do have funds budgeted that. However, I would like to a year from now have Mark come in my office and say that he's enjoying his retirement. So first priority would be uh, take a look at the building, uh, the zoning official, and also some of the areas of the inspection in that that Mark was grandfathered with, and we no longer can do that. Um, I am um, also working on reviewing with that, which somehow dovetails is the current fire inspector and deputy fire marshal. I've looked at the ordinance, I've started looking at state statutes. I'm also working with the state fire marshal. That I consider with the building officials probably a priority right now, that I really want to see what we can do and what will get in place in that area. I'm going mopeds. I have had a couple of meetings. I met with the chief uh, extensively. I looked through a lot of the information that I have in place. The chief and I have some ideas that we will be working on in the coming weeks as it relates to next summer. I'm not prepared at this point to discuss what those are. Some will be working with the state police. Um, I have asked uh, the chief to provide us for the next meeting a statistical information as relates to citations and things that were issued by the police, uh, the state police during the time that they were here. So we can uh, begin to wrap our brains around uh, the numbers as it relates to statistical information. Also, I met with a doctor earlier this week. He um, has advised me he may have the best data because the rescue go there. People walk and go there if there's injuries. So he thinks he may be the best one to provide us with some data and information as it relates to medical um, information with mopeds. So he did say he will start doing some data mining in the coming months, which I think will also be helpful for us.
Chris, really?
Um, can I just make a point of when we have this discussion? I think it's important to encompass not just mopeds, but everything, traffic, pedestrian, bicycle vehicular. We spent money on a traffic plan that Al Davis did, a traffic study. We have yet to implement it. I don't know why we spent the money if we weren't willing to do it. If some of those things were implemented, we not might not be where we are right now. So I I I definitely want would like to see all that data, but I think we need to take a more comprehensive approach when it comes to the safety. Not just moped safety, but everything, bike safety, vehicular and pedestrian safety, because it's all wrapped up together in a lot of cases, particularly when it comes to accidents. So I think we need to uh, take a take a close look at not just mopeds, but I think everything like we did previous years, and I think we're going to arrive to the same conclusions as we did in previous years. And hopefully, we can implement some of the, some of the recommendations that were made by the professionals in previous years.
A lot more of them. Yeah, we did do a few things that were in that report. There were a few. Right. Thank you, Chris. I spend recent?
Mary Ann, it's, thank you very much for meeting with the chief and really putting uh, data together. Uh, I think we all heard over the last few meetings, the uh, health services numbers are higher than rescue because of those walk-ins. I think your your insight on that is right on. I guess what I'd also love your help in is a process over the next, I don't know, two months, two and a half months, especially while moped operators are still here, a number of them do leave in the winter. And and not just what's the data and a recommendation or a plan from you and the chief or state police. But really, it's sort of where do we want to take this? Because I I think, you know, on one end of the spectrum is Chris's comments, which is about totality. Another is, boy, how do we make sure that we we've really addressed some of the moped discussions, which there's clearly been some community dialogue about, and and bicycles? So if you could help us with maybe dedicated work sessions, if that's the right thing. I do believe that uh, that we have to have some discussions around enforcement, uh, and how do we think through that? We have to have discussions around ways to reduce, uh, ways to manage, to Chris's point, ways to implement past recommendations, if that's, if all of those could happen. So I think a schedule plan of, hey, this will take us through November, or whatever it may be, where we can actually hit some rubber to the road will really help me. Because then we aren't all biting at the chomp and wanting to jump in. We can actually add, you know, have a process to it. So that would help me. Thank you.
Right, Mary Ann?
Okay, great. Thank you. And the last um, area that I've spent some time on, and this is a pretty broad area, is it's the IT. I've met with Michelle and we received somewhat of an update as it relates to IT town-wide. Michelle and I had decided the best thing to do now is to meet uh, continually on a weekly basis as we move forward with some of those prioritizations and where and look at IT and do a similar to what we're doing with major projects. As when we think things will get done, or when we think we'll be able to address some of the IT issues and concerns that have been raised by the town council and uh, also working closely with staff uh, as it relates to IT. And that is pretty much what I have at this point as it relates to administrative uh, projects and where I'm focusing my time on. Like I said to you before, I would be providing you with a town managers' report on the third Wednesday of each month, and a lot of this information will be there in a written form. And it'll be updated as we go along.
Mary Ann, just briefly, it sounds like you've had the opportunity to pretty much touch all the bases in terms of what's going on in town and who's doing it, that sort of thing. Would that be your correct assumption?
Yeah, that is a pretty good assumption. I do have a few more meetings I would like to have. And also do a little more of a tour of the town with some of the professionals like Sam and uh, the town engine Jim Jemmermeyer, which I haven't had the opportunity to. But for the most part, I I reached out to everyone and talked to a lot of folks and have a nu- number of other meetings scheduled as we go along.
Great, very good. Um, any further questions from Mary Ann on these uh, these two items? Sven, Chris, Martha?
Yeah, I just had, I just had one thing.
Martha, go ahead.
Thank you. I uh, yeah, I wondered what was going on there. I only wanted to say that I think that we have an opportunity this fall to get some very specific things done with the mopeds, and I don't want to lose that in this overall global solution that is just, has always been paralytic in this town. I understand. I understand the overall focus. I know there were some things in that traffic study that even Al Davis has already said wouldn't work. And I don't, I honestly don't remember most of it. I just remember the striping that, which did work. It was great. There were some things that were, you know, possible. Some things were quick. I, I'd have to look at the study again, honestly. But I, I just think there were some very, very simple things that, that could be accomplished without a great deal of fall to all, that we, we should not let that opportunity go by for the sake of long, complicated conversations about multiple activities.
Okay, thank you, Martha.
Thank you. That was all.
Okay. Mary Ann, anything you want to wrap up?
No, not at this point.
Okay. That's our agenda for the evening, and we do have another meeting coming up on, on Wednesday. We'll be working on the agenda tomorrow and Friday. So if anyone has any things they want to see get on that agenda, do contact one of us or Molly and get it, get it, get in our, in our, in our website and or get it in our wheelhouse. That being said, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Have a second?
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor, Chris?
Aye.
Sven?
Aye.
Martha?
Aye.
I vote in the affirmative also. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening. Stay safe, everyone.
Thanks, Ken.
Good night.
Thank you.